The first order of business is to elect a moderator. And I'll make a motion that we elect John Fowler to serve as the moderator of this special town meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. John, why don't you stand and proceed?
Please repeat after me. Hi, John Fowler.
Hi, John Fowler.
You swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state?
That I will support the Constitution of this state and the United States and this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
Long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Hi, John Fowler. You swear that I will faithfully discharge?
I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities?
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me as moderator of this meeting.
The duties incumbent upon me as moderator of this meeting.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. Before we get going on the next article, just a little bit of business before we get going. If you are a registered voter, you should have a fluorescent orange, fluorescent yellow. If you are not a registered voter, please refrain from voting. And also, as far as speaking during the meeting, if you're not a registered voter, please raise your hand to be recognized. And it's a vote of those present registered voters to determine whether or not they want to allow you to speak. We will conduct tonight's meeting according to the most recent edition of the Maine Moderator's Manual published by Maine Municipal Association. There's thirty-plus pages in it, and the easiest way to describe it is do the will of the people. So that's what we'll attempt to do tonight. I'll continue on with the warrant, and Article Two says, Shall the town of St. George vote to approve the comprehensive plan as presented at the public hearing on October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five? Could I have a motion to approve this as written?
Any motion?
If we get one? Is there a second? Second. Okay, now we'll have discussion. Any comments or discussion on Article Two?
Hi, dear. And I just wanted to say that I actually did get around to reading it, John. Thank you very much. And I truly appreciated all the hard work and all the effort and the information that was contained in the comprehensive plan. The first time I read a comprehensive plan was about oh-thirty-something years ago, and it wasn't nearly as descriptive. It wasn't as nearly as supportive of the community. It wasn't as nearly forward-thinking. And I think the Comprehensive Planning Commission deserves lots of kudos for the work well done.
Any other comments, questions, anything?
I have a comment. Yeah, I just wanted to say, Steve, right on the board, just wanted to say, I hope this will be a living document and won't get shelved and gathered dust, and I don't think it will, especially seeing this kind of turnout to approval. So I can't improve on what the lady said there about it. I think that's all true.
Any other comments, questions? Do you want to drink us out longer, or do you want to vote? Okay, all those in favor of Article Two as written, please raise your hands. All those opposed?
And opposed.
Town manager, do we need a count? Or is it just okay with?
Yeah.
Seeing what I saw, I declare that Article Two is passed as written. Very much. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourned? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Thank you to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Absolutely.
Yes, so we'll take a five-minute break for people to leave who don't want to stay for the select board meeting that'll be starting in a few minutes. But feel free to stay.
Lucky to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? It's really an extraordinary effort by a great team. Really was.
Wendy's cooking.
Something like this. So.
I'm gonna send out an email. Somebody's gotta go in and set up.
Yeah, good.
All the select board meeting to orders since we have, I think, the long night before us, some of us. Um. I don't think we need to do adjustments to the agenda, I think.
We need to, yeah.
Do you?
I have.
Yeah?
I, we've been asked to appoint incumbents to the Harbor Committee.
All right. Yes. Did you have something to bring?
No, that was the only.
What was it? Okay.
That nomination.
Yeah, I wrote it down, so I will definitely do that. Do any select board members have a conflict of interest? No. Um, we do not yet have the draft minutes for October sixth, right?
Correct, but I did send out the, what was it? There was the, the public hearing, right? So that had, but not the minutes.
So, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the public hearing minutes. Any discussion about those? All in favor? That's five. Did people have a chance to review the draft minutes of our workshop with the school board from Wednesday night?
I did not.
No? If, if people didn't have a chance to review, then we can do it next time. All right, that would be better then. We'll do that. Um, communications received by select board members or the town manager. Brandon, do you have any communications to report?
Uh, nothing that I think the board needs.
Okay. Um, I've been in communication with Mallory Tripp from the school board, who, um, and their board and our board are gonna talk about, um, including more school board events and information on the town calendar. Um, this just came up in the last few days, so, um, I think that would be a good thing. She thinks that would be a good thing. But, um, we'll see what the boards want to do about that. But she did, um, alert me to the fact that there is a book fair at the school this week, and if anyone wants to volunteer at the book fair, email Mallory Tripp at the school. So, um, that's during the school day.
I had something I wanted to.
Go ahead.
It's, it's not exactly a communication, but Jane and I and maybe others were there. There was a big turnout for an open house at the former Wildcat Lobster Pound property, and it's now belongs as a donation. It belongs to the Maine Coast Fishermen's Association, and I think it's full of potential and very exciting that, that, that nonprofit organization took it over, which that organization began in Fort Clyde. So that's kind of fitting, and here they are. They're gonna have this property, and they're looking at ideas for what to do with it, and they're welcoming any input from anybody on that, and they haven't figured it out yet. Ben Martin, who's head of that association, was inviting people to, you know, suggest anything, but, um, they're definitely into collaborating with the town, with Erin Gutt Learning Center, with the school, Blueberry Cove Camp, and, and so I think it's a pretty neat thing and a good fit, and we want to have this big building just sitting there empty.
It was a very big turnout, so that was exciting.
Just encouraging news, yeah.
All right, then we'll turn to the review of the warrant for dispersments to the town. Do people have a chance to look through this? Yes. Did people, any questions? I actually did not have any questions.
What was the piece of equipment that the solid, under solid weight, the fourteen? Four sixty-one, did they buy a new container or something?
They did.
They did.
Yeah, it was a new container. The, uh, um, it may have been, I don't know if that was one or two, um, the they, essentially, our transporter would not haul our containers anymore. They get banged up after being packed down in an excavator and um, for so long, and stuff starts falling out when you're driving it down the road, and so, uh, we were anticipating that purchase, and so it was built into the, the budget this year. It was not a surprise.
And I was wondering, under, um, streetlights, have they taken into consideration yet of using any of our points from solar to go towards our streetlights? I know in the past, they wouldn't let us do that. They still won't let us do that.
No.
And then under accounts, the boat, sixty-nine, four ninety-eight?
That's a deposit on the new boat that we've been budgeting, and so just to lock in the price to make sure that it doesn't go up. It's been a pretty pickle price. Aluminum has been, um, has gone up, and it's been, so we just wanted to get a deposit into.
And then it won't hold it any higher than?
Exactly.
And I know he'd been looking for the possibility of a used boat, but this is for a new boat?
That's right.
Okay.
Sometimes I come to them.
All right.
Then will we get the boat?
Hopefully by next summer, but, um, that's optimistic here. Yeah, I mean, if it's being, I'm not sure if it's being built or if it was already built, um, if it is already built, we'll get it by.
What boat is this?
For the Harbor Master.
Okay. Yes, we should have been clear about that. We've been setting money aside. We've been setting money aside for a number of years, so we forget that, that people listening might not be aware of that. Um, did anybody have any questions about the tennis court money?
No.
So, um, the repairs were done and resurfacing of the tennis courts and pickleball playing lines. And so.
I would like you all to, it is in the, the bylaws of the, um, Lipson Fund for you all to officially approve the expense out of that account.
Okay.
What, if it's over a thousand dollars, they want the select board approval.
So let's, um, separately approve is it the twenty thousand, one fifty?
The twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-two cents is, is what's in the reserve. So we're, we're using every penny of that. And then the remaining eight thousand, ninety-seven dollars and twenty-four cents is what we need to use from the Lipson Fund.
All right, so I will move that we, um, transfer eight thousand, ninety-seven dollars and twenty-four cents from the Lipson Tennis Fund to, um, pay, help pay for the work on the tennis courts and pickleball courts.
Seconded.
And there's a question? Another question. Do we charge for the people to use the tennis courts, or is that, um, part of the? No, we don't charge. It's just paid for by taxpayers and made available to anybody who wants to use it.
I would, I, yeah, so I guess it depends on your philosophy. I would consider the fact that we maintain it via tax dollars as charging residents for using, but that's, that's just me.
But, and this was a, a family that just summered here that set up this fund, right, at the time? They just summered here?
Yep.
Um, and so, and that was actually something just discussed at the Budget Committee meeting. You may have heard that when you were coming in, that if people want to donate money for a purpose, like maintaining the tennis court or fixing up the Snows Point Lodge or buy a new ambulance, we are happy to accept donations for things like that. Um, but otherwise, most of us are supporting these things with our tax dollars. So.
Historically, we've never charged for any of the programs within the Parks and Recreation Department.
So then I'll call for a vote on the use of the Lipson Fund money. All in favor? That's all five of us. Thank you. And then, um, the select board is approving the dispersment on this warrant of one million, forty-four thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-six cents. So that's what was approved from our warrant tonight. Of course, I signed the copy I had, so if you have one that doesn't have my writing on it, you can sign that, Irene.
There's also a warrant for September ninth for the Tenfold Storage Road.
Okay.
They got passed around but not signed. And then there's also the, um, last bill on the Tenfold Storage Road.
All right, so.
Final of just the last bill that come in?
It's the last bill that we know of. Ever gonna come in on that.
So the September ninth warrant um, was for three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents for Cold Storage Road, and the October seventeenth warrant is for five thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-one cents.
But great question for you, Irene. How are we doing on tax payments? Property taxes?
On the property taxes?
It looks like.
Yeah, they're coming in. Well, I mean, you, you see the balance on them?
Yeah.
Check bar.
It looked, looked good. Is it compared favorably to previous years?
About the same.
Yeah.
Um, there was just a lot more payments in a shorter period of time.
It does, but bills run out a little bit later.
Do we have any public comments about anything that's not on the agenda that anybody wanted to make? All right, then.
Haven't signed all of those yet.
Um, then, Susie, if you wanna do the quarterly budget review for us, the Budget Committee just met, and some of you may have come in at the tail end of that.
So we met with Brandon and with Irene, and, um, we went over the the budget to actuals for the first quarter of our fiscal year, which is July, August, September. Um, we're within a, a quarter. I mean, so we've spent about a little less than twenty-five percent. We asked, um, Irene if she had any concerns going, coming up about things coming forward, and, um, she had none. And then we, we talked a little. Georg had some great, this is Georg, he's also on the Budget Committee, and he, um, had some great ideas last year a, a, about how we might we, how we look at budgeting, and so we, we talked about that for, um, a period of time during our meeting as well. But essentially, unless you guys have questions, um, after looking at the financials, we, we were, um, we were happy with the budget, the actual review.
Do the select board members have any questions about the quarterly budget information that was sent out today, and I'm sorry I didn't get this too soon, or I should have, um, remembered to ask Irene for it before today.
I just glanced at it.
Well, as Susie said, there aren't any surprises or concerns, I don't think. No, should I move on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I gave people a chance to ask their questions. Thank you, Susie, and Budget Committee members. Feel free to stay or not, as you wish. Um. So we have liquor license renewals for the Happy Clam and the East Wind Inn. Brandon, you wanna say whatever needs to be said?
Both of these are, um, older than five years, so they don't require any sort of, uh, public hearing or review. I've had no formal complaints about either establishment in the last year, um, and so I, I would recommend that we, you redo them.
So do you want to make a motion?
I just want to ask the question, isn't there a process by which you can start signing these after five years that doesn't have to go through us anymore?
That's why I was.
That's actually on the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, I think that the, I think the answer, it hasn't been the case. The thing that was the case is that after five years, you didn't have to have a public hearing.
Okay. Okay.
But we still have been the ones making the decision, but Brandon's proposed that if for an organization that has no complaints, is over five years, that we delegate that as a select board policy.
Okay.
But if people, um, does somebody want to make, make a motion about approving those liquor license renewals?
Sure. I move we approve both liquor licenses for the Happy Clam and the East Wind.
All in favor? That's five. Um, because our, do we, oh, you just sent an email. We don't have to sign anything, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We used to. Now they just come to my inbox, so.
So, um, as we just discussed, Brandon was thinking that, um, it might be easier if for those organizations that have no complaints and are over five years in existence, we adopt a select board policy that we, um, delegate those to him, and because the select board policy that says our process for adopting policies says that we have to, for a new policy, have two weeks' notice, we're just throwing this out there for everybody to know tonight, and we'll vote on it two weeks. So I guess that's so people have advanced warning of possible policies being adopted. Um, so the next item on the agenda is, um, the, the formation of an ad hoc committee to undertake an open space plan for the town. Um, and this basically grew out of the comprehensive plan process and also the Conservation Commission's work. Um, and some of you are probably aware that the state of Maine has a goal for thirty percent of of land in the state of Maine to be conserved or preserved by the year twenty fifty.
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty?
Thirty percent by twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty.
Coming right up, Susan.
Yes, that is coming right up. And in the comprehensive plan survey, the community was asked whether people supported that goal, and, um, the answer was yes by the majority of people. Um, and so some members of the Conservation Commission and others are interested in the formation of an ad hoc committee to look at this. Um, Ken, do you want to talk about what the process would look like? Or what an open space plan is, or what the point of it is? I did circulate Willow's, um, memo today, but it was just this afternoon, so I don't know if people had a chance to look at this. Um, I don't remember Willow's last name. Oh, it's on. Um, so Willow is our, um, Colby intern for this year, and she's working with Erin Dunn on a number of planning issues. And so, um, she prepared this um, document about what is an open space plan, what are the benefits, what are the downsides? Um, so if you just want to run through any of that for the group, Ken, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, I can kind of read from what was, what's done, and I just received this from Erin this afternoon, if I had a chance to look at it too much. We've talked about it at our last meeting. We've worked with Erin a little bit over the last couple of months, waiting for the comp plan to be approved before this potentially would go forward. Um, but an open space plan is documented, defines a vision for the community's conservation use of outdoor spaces, which are predominantly undeveloped areas, uh, or lightly developed areas. Um, and it's not just for conservation. It's a plan that would include recreation, would include areas in a town that would be subject to climate change, that you're trying to protect to minimize the impact of climate change. Um, and it could even, some towns have included areas that are culturally, culturally important or historically important to keep as open space plans. Um, you know, one of the first things you would do in terms of, after forming a committee, is define what our definition of open space would be. And then, you know, once you form a committee. Um, and then, you know, once you form a committee. Then you would have open public sessions to get feedback from the public, what their thoughts are. And then, you know, proceed through a number of steps. Um. I think from our, from our standpoint, you know, even though it came out of the Conservation Commission early on, and it was in the comp plan. We think it needs a wider um. Group of people, other than just the Conservation Commission people looking into it, whether it includes somebody from the planning board. Somebody from Parks and Rec Department, possibly somebody that had been on the comprehensive plan. Um. You know, I'm trying to think of what else. I think the resilience committee, they have an input into it based on climate. Conditions. Um, possibly even the Harvard Committee. Since waterfront acts best aspects of it should be included. Um, but I think. There's a number of areas when we have tried to recruit people and get that. Who put people together to, to get it started. Um. Erin's done some work, put together steps in the process. I know if you wanna talk about that, Erin?
Well, one thing I, I would point out is that. One reason. This is even being contemplated right now, is that the fact that Erin is with us for another eleven months gives us. Capacity for somebody um to dedicate some serious time in addition to the volunteers on an ad hoc committee. So that was definitely part of the thinking of um moving forward with this now. And. Erin, in the, can you just tell, in the comprehensive plan, you collected. All the information about land that's currently conserved or preserved or whatever. Um, in town, and that's what in the appendix of the comprehensive plan, there's a list or something?
In the body of the, of the plan. And I think in the natural resources section or the land use section, maybe. I don't remember which one, but yeah. It came out to, I think, about. Hand reminder. The nine hundred acres that are at least somewhat.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if I have that number here.
Yeah, I remember it was over eight hundred acres.
Yeah.
Because I remember Meg Rasmussen asked about that when we had our comprehensive plan. That PowerPoint in June and talked about the plan. Meg asked about open space and what currently. I, I mean, that's a small percentage, obviously, of the land in St. George.
It includes those public and private land that can be included in that.
They're not land trust properties. They're not town properties.
Correct.
Right.
And people. Um. What's the, the Humble Farmer's Farm where he um. Preserved that property. I remember when we were looking at the growth areas. Um, that that. Those acres there, he had. So there are lots of.
There's a conservation easement under Georgia's level land, land trust for that property.
So there are lots of different properties that most of us would have no idea that they're going to remain the way they look today. Because the property owner has taken steps to make sure that that's the case.
In perpetuity.
Right.
Well, and I think part of the process would be to learn from other towns that have been through it before. Erin's looked at a few. I've looked at a few of other ones. That we would wanna take a look and, you know, not reinvent the wheel on this one. We just wanna see what other people have done. And then get feedback, you know, from the community in terms of putting that together. And then I guess there's some, some communities, there's a wide variety of how they've gone about it. Some places, it's all been all volunteer effort. Some places, it's been volunteer plus consultants. Some towns just pay. A firm to put together their whole conservation, their whole uh open space plan. Um, I mean, a couple of years ago, I went to uh Maine um. Association Conservation Commissions, and they had a presentation on open space plans for, I think it was counted was, but. That one had been done by an outside firm totally. They did go through the same process of get the community involvement and so forth, which is important in, in doing it, but. Um, you know, there's a whole spectrum of approaches.
Yeah, I mean, I think our thinking would be if, if we're gonna do it, it would be a combination of volunteers and Aaron. Um, not having. A bunch of spare money in our budget.
I mean, we might, at some point, it's, it's gonna be a couple of year precedent.
Right.
So it's not gonna be quick. At some point, we may decide that. You know, we need a consultant to get some advice on some things that we don't have any knowledge of.
But do people have questions about this as an idea?
I think it's a good idea. I don't have questions about it. Don't know that much about it yet, but this reading over what. Sent out here from Willow seemed, made sense to me. I think for the, the general population, even know what, how much is land we have in open space is useful. And, and what other properties they might wanna see in open space in the future.
Right. Do they want more recreation? Do they want more land conserved for habitat? Or they want more water access? And so, gotta get that type of feedback to put together a plan. And then, you know, you put together a plan, that doesn't mean something happens right away. It could be this like a comp plan. It could be a ten-year plan or longer to achieve the goals.
So does someone wanna make a motion that we form an ad hoc committee to um look at. Creating an open space plan for our town?
Would we be creating a committee but with no members yet? Because we have no.
That's right, until it was formed. Um, but it didn't make sense to ask to serve. I, I did, I did already ask Steve if it were formed. He would be the select board liaison, and he said, yes. So we got that covered.
Oh, good.
Um.
Unless you really wanna do a.
So you wanna make a motion, Steve?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we create an open space committee and see if people wanna sign up to be part of it.
Alright, I'll second that. Um, any other discussion? All in favor? That's five of us. And um. So we will start talking to people. If anybody who's aware of anyone in town who's interested in serving on this, um, talk to them and um. We'll collect names and bring them to the select board and nominate people to that.
They don't need to be restricted to the list of organizations that I listed that, that we would like to get inputs from or have an interest in it.
Any, anybody who has this as a, a special interest should. Come forward and, and you should reach out to somebody if you know this is something they care about.
That a notice we could put on the website?
Yeah, that's great. Um. I did wanna let people know that um the state has extended. The time by which community paramedicine people need to get certified. We were worried that um. We wouldn't have a community paramedicine program if they stuck with their. November first deadline for people to all get their cer- certifications um. Done, but they've extended that, so that's not a concern. And I did go last week at. Um. Benji Lowery's invitation to a statewide meeting of community paramedicine programs in Augusta. And um it was very interesting to hear people from around the state talk about. These programs and how they are um. Working together with um home health, with emergency room doctors, with hospice programs. And primary care providers to help people in their communities. And so it was a very interesting um. Day that they had. And Katie Jacobs attended. And um Amy Drinkwater was one of the presenters, and I spoke as a um. Family member of somebody who had um been very grateful for community paramedicine. And I also read. A piece by um Dell Welch, who's been very grateful for the community paramedicine support of her. So. Let's see, what's, um, a reminder to all of us that next Monday night from five to seven thirty. The Select Board will, will be doing our emergency simulation with the state people upstairs. Brandon and I will arrange for food to be here since five to seven thirty. It pretty much covers dinnertime. Um.
What's that class on Wednesday night that we got the email about?
Do you, from Ryan Klein, do you know?
Uh, I think that technically um. All elected officials are supposed to take that class.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't believe that this board has done that. Timmy, have you done that in the past?
Hmm.
Yeah. Um.
If, if we could have had more than like four days' notice, I mean, we didn't know.
Right, I know. He, he recognized that, acknowledged it, and.
Are, are we gonna get, how often do they do the class?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure.
As I. I obviously wanna do it, but I can't do it on Wednesday.
I think he said that the Select Board is something that we had to do, and I asked him about it. Told him I'd done it a couple of times before, and he said if I've already done it, I don't have to do it.
Sure.
We have one combined member and. Nothing else. Timmy will lead us through any crisis.
There you go. Well, ho- hopefully our simulation will help until the rest of us get. Yeah, our credentials. Um, oh, and I wanted to tell everybody. November thirteenth, there's a panel discussion upstairs, turning catch into commerce. It's um, Erin has organized this. It's part of our working waterfront series. And the panelists include Glenn Libby, um.
And Lee, Buzz Bella, and Sarah Radbaker.
Yes. So a very diverse group of um working waterfront business owners. And so it's to encourage all of us to understand and. Um, buy seafood from them and also to um. Share with people considering starting um such a business, what their experiences have been. So that's November thirteenth from five to six thirty, and there will be dinner. Soups and bread or chili available that night. And there will be stuff on the website about that. We'll get information out. So, um, Brian, do you wanna make your nomination to the Harvard Committee?
Uh, yeah, we'd like to make the motion to nominate the grievances to the Harvard Committee as an uh. Yeah, an alternate.
An alternate. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? That's five. And, oh, and um. Also, the election is on November fourth. I think all we have. On our ballot is the two state ballot measures. Is that right?
Yes.
And absentee ballots are available now if people want to. Um, vote by absentee ballot. So just a reminder that that is happening. Your report?
Um, wanted to follow up on the conversation about a cell tower in. Um, Fort Clyde, I think it was the, the last time they tried to put it by the. Fire station, it was shut down because it's a lifeline landing zone. Uh, I talked to. Uh, Katie Jacob, our EMS chief, and she said that uh. Regardless of where an accident is, they really just use the um big ball field as a landing zone and that. So that I, I don't think that that would be a problem if this was um.
If we got a tower person.
Right, yeah. I think we could um just remove that as a landing zone and um. Continue to use the, the ball that was, they have them. I say as they have it, there hasn't been a little like, like quite some time, thankfully.
Yeah.
Um.
That's the good news.
Yes. Uh, and then this probably should have come up in communication. It wasn't really anything for y'all to vote on, but um. There's a resident that lives on the uh sort of intersection of. Or sort of in that triangle that is made up by Wallston Road, Smalley Town Road and uh one thirty-one. And is just concerned about uh the. The traffic there and, and some of the accidents that have been caused there. Um. And I think he's looking for some uh, some changes to be made. I just essentially um. Said that, you know, reminded him that one thirty-one is really up to the state. I, you know, I believe both accidents uh were in OUI. So I can't imagine that the state is going to chuck that up to, you know, a design flaw. Um. So, but if you wanted. Any measures taken on, you know, Smalley Town or, or, or Wallston Road that, you know, I could. I'm on an agenda um to talk to, to you all. Currently, um like from a road commissioner's perspective, I don't. Necessarily. I, I don't necessarily disagree with the, the resident, but you know, I, I also don't. See the need to put up, you know, guardrails there, which is, you know, the, the ask. Um.
Were the accidents on one thirty-one?
One of them came down one thirty-one. Went into the ditch and sort of jumped over Wallston Road and deep into the, you know, and that was almost into his back. I understand his, his concern. And um. But.
If we start having issues that aren't related to alcohol.
That's sort of where I'm at.
Although during um, um. When that road was icy, I saw a car that ended up in that ditch there. Um, and so I, it would be worth having the state consider a guardrail where there, there is kind of a. Significant drop off there.
That used to be a little road right there years and years ago. That was another way to get to Walston.
It was the only way. It sort of, they, they changed the.
Pinch point there that, yeah.
Hmm. They, they changed the entrance uh or where, where Walston Road uh enters onto one thirty-one to make it a. Hard turn with a stop rather than a yield that can be done at a, a higher speed. Yeah, so.
And you improved it just recently, the paving.
Yeah, I widened the, the entrance onto one thirty-one.
I had two people thank me for that. Not me, but the town.
I did it myself. I was out there paving.
So again, I, I don't know that either of the pieces came from. One thirty, you know, from Smalley Town or Wallston Road, but I, I did pass this concern on to the contact at DOT.
I'll do it.
Uh, and that was it.
Alright.
That's loads out yet?
Loads are coming out tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It just moved mountains, too.
Yeah, I wish we'd gotten them out before the weather that was.
It was some beautiful days there over the weekend.
But we, Ryan and I will be there. And they are being um. Uh, in the, they're stored in the four-hour parking. Um, next year. Uh, we'll be able to stack them so that they take up less parking. There's some work that Ryan needs to do to them. In this offseason, adding cleats and uh, and some sort of handrails to. Um, at least our feedback on. Uh, and so. Because of that, we can't stack them. Otherwise, he wouldn't be able to do the work this winter.
Alright, moving on to committee reports. The planning board.
Planning board, um, most of the meeting was taken up in consideration of the breed and peer. Um, and specifically in terms of the surrounding character. Um. And there was more information presented, and eventually the planning board did approve the peer. That's it.
There was. I mean, Anne, we're coming out of that. Um.
Ditch.
Meeting has asked the town to sort of consider looking at uh. Its land use.
I think that she, she and Wendy should confer about that so that Wendy can. Get that on our agenda in something separate from just a committee report. If they want us to take some steps, don't you think?
Yeah.
Since, I mean, I just, Brandon forwarded that to me, but I didn't.
Right. I mean, it was discussed, but it was sort of after the fact, so it wasn't.
Okay, great.
Um, Board of Appeals has not met. Um, Board of Appeals has not met. Harbor committee?
Oh, we don't know.
Um, the Budget Committee met this afternoon. Cemetery?
Um, the cemetery met last Wednesday and I was only there for about ten minutes and then I had to go to the meeting up at the school, so. But they are working, continuing work on their guidelines and their um possible fees. And they took a really good look, Dawn said, the section of the cemetery up here, at the um policies from the town of Warren. She thought they have really good policies, really in depth. They did a lot of work with theirs, so they're gonna sort of use that as a guide to get theirs completed and.
Great.
I think they've completed all of their uh discussion and sort of deciding what they want to put forth to you all. And uh I think they just needed to prepare it and couldn't get it up in time before this, so it should be on your next agenda.
That's great. That's wonderful. Um, the Emergency Services Committee is meeting in November. I don't remember the date. Um. Comprehensive Plan Committee will have um one more meeting, not right away, but um they will be having a celebration that it was passed tonight, but um Erin has put together an Excel spreadsheet to help all of the committees and the select board and town staff track our progress toward the goals in the comprehensive plan. So the committee is gonna meet to review that and then um, we'll bring it to this group for all of us to look at how we make sure that it is a living document and doesn't become um you know, gather dust, I would say, but since it's mostly in computers, it's not really in the dust.
Fashion.
Right. So funny, isn't it? Um, Conservation Commission, you want to do the report for Steve?
I'm hoping Ken can, because I attended the community forums. It wasn't actually a meeting.
Me too.
Yeah, the school.
So we met on October second. Um, let me just see. From Land Trust Coordination, MCHT has now purchased that piece of property that they've been getting free use of on um on Clark Island Road for off-site parking, because there's always a overflow parking issues at Clark Island. So that's now permanent part of the MCHT. And I think they plan on possibly expanding the parking there as well. They have a, it's about an acre lot there that they they now own. Um. Always Farm, we talked about that briefly. We're still finishing up the due diligence, all the documents that we we received from LMF. And now in the HOA's hands for their approval. Uh, Laurie, I see is online here, but she's been having trouble getting a quorum for a meeting of all the HOA residents. I don't know where that stands at this point, but hopefully we'll have that, they'll have that meeting soon.
Is that the last step that the homeowners association needs to approve?
So they have to prove it. And then once they approve those documents, then it goes back to the LMF to fill in all the blanks, because there's like three or four documents that all reference each other. So once they're all done, and then um there'll there'll be a formal closing and then we'll get our money.
And this, for anybody who doesn't know what this is about, this is about Old Woods Farm um property that um the town will be owning and um have trails on and pu- the public will be able to access from the Old Woods Farm subdivision at the back.
Right. And they'll be, people will pass a park in the available parking area. We still had a few instances of the people going in and just parking on the road, which would be an emergency vehicle issue.
So, and there aren't signs yet because this hasn't all happened or there are?
There are signs there. People are ignoring the signs, so we may have to change the signs around or something, but we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Um. Let's see. On the trails, we posted hunting season signs on all the trails. We don't close the trails. We just posted that it is hunting season. And then we'll take them down the end of December after the season's, basically the deer season's over. Um, we've started looking at the Scout property off Wallston Road for potential trails there. Uh, we've run into, there's, there's two parcels. If you remember when we town accepted that property, this big wetland area between the front property and the back property, we couldn't find a way to get from here to there easily. Um we've looked at trying to cross the transfer station property to get back there. And we're hoping that we'll try that again at some point, but um behind the old um dump hill there, it drops off pretty quick. So we're hoping um we'll try again and see if there's a way to get through there and potentially propose going through the back of the transfer station property, because there's some beautiful property out there all the way back to to the Meadowbrook. But we have some nice trails back there. Um.
How many acres is that? How many acres is that area that we?
You mean, just the scouting property?
That, right, that the town. Well, or, yeah.
I think it's twenty-five acres total. I I have to go back on that if it's, yeah.
That's, that's at least the right ballpark.
I think it was around thirty, yeah.
Is it thirty?
I talked to Josh McPhail. He used to take camping groups out there and on the backside. So there must be a way through that swampy area somewhere.
And it's been so dry. I mean, if you could find it now.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll talk to Josh. And somebody suggests I talk, I think you suggest I talk to Ryan Klein, right?
Yeah, because Ryan would have been one of the scouts.
He's been out there a lot, so he can give.
But then the transfer station, you would have known it from looking at it, is also on sixty acres. Is that, there's a lot of property that's not used and can't really be used um in any sort of developable way because of all the wetlands. It is, you know, sort of behind the facility there.
Light habitat.
Mm-hmm.
That, there's a lot of St. George like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Redge or swamp.
Right.
Um, dig it up. So we're following up on the effort that we had with the Emerald Ash Borer. Um, where we had a person from the state come down and talk about the Emerald Ash Borer and the ash trees at Fort Point. Um, so we're looking into saying we want to try and preserve some limited number of those trees. Um, because eventually if we don't, there'll be a hazard to people going down the trail there, because they'll, you know, they'll eventually the disease will take over, the branches will start to fall off, and there won't be any ash trees there. So um we'll look, we'll try to get some estimates of what it takes to do the injections in the trees, which may have to happen every two to three years. Uh, but, you know, we don't need to be preserving a limited number that near the trails and not worry about all the trails, because it's a lot of ash trees out there.
Quick question about that. In other words, if you treated, say, ash trees that are along the trail or right on the edge of the trail, the the diseased ones behind wouldn't affect the treated ones?
No, apparently not.
Man, I don't mean, you could do a partial rather than treat all of them.
Yeah, right.
That's what I was wondering.
I mean, it's a, it's a cost situation of, you know, how much do you want to spend?
Could you all, um, would you all be willing to take a look at the uh Snow's Point Lodge property as well? There are a couple of stands of ash trees over there. It may be worth adding to your.
Some good side, right?
Yeah, to your service.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I mean, Dell's the expert on the commission if that.
Oh, yeah, Dell Pearson, right.
Um. I think that we talked a little bit about open space that we talked about tonight. Um, we did have, in the September meeting, I think I mentioned that we had some people come that were concerned about the Sea Smoke Lane Pier.
Mm-hmm.
And were concerned about it from a scenic aspect. Um, but we said we couldn't really comment on it relative to that, the scenic aspect of it, since it would be a um even though it is listed, the beach is listed as a scenic area in town in the comprehensive plan. Um, but people on committee felt that we need to see some renderings of what it was look like out there, but I think that was pretty much accomplished at the last planning board meeting. Um, so I think that's a done deal behind us at this point.
All right. Thank you. Um, the Selfish Committee.
Um, they meet tomorrow at five thirty in Warren at the town office.
Solid waste.
They meet tomorrow at um two P V, two PM here at the town office, and I will still be working in Rockport, so I will not be able to attend as the liaison if anybody else is.
So they're gonna meet here at two o'clock tomorrow?
Oh, at two, yes.
Well, I could do that, and I've never been to one of them meetings, so I'll do it.
Pretty exciting.
I'm sure it is. Um. Parks and Rec.
They met today. I wasn't able to attend, but I got the minutes from Ashley. Um, they started out with old business. They were talking about this soccer season, just wrapping up this week, I think, and um it was successful. Everybody played great, had a lot of good competition. The kids are doing great. Um they've decided to put out a survey to parents and coaches to get some feedback and see what they can change, if anything. Uh, they talked about Collins Park, which was just repaved. The basketball courts repaved. At the time, it hadn't been painted, but I know today it looks like it's done, so it's been painted and the basketball hoops are up. And it was widened right, ran, so much bigger than it was. Uh, they talked about their committee goals. They decided not to vote this week. They're gonna vote at the next meeting on their goals, so I won't say what they are until they're official, I guess. Uh, youth basketball is coming up. They started talking about Muscle Ridge Basketball Department already, so it's not too early to ask for volunteers. Because that's a huge undertaking.
When is, when is that?
It's gonna be, as of right now, it's gonna be the first weekend in March. We used to do the third weekend, and that was kind of too late. There was a lull between seasons. So we went the last week of February last year, and that's, that was too early. It mixed up with the high school championships, so they're going first week of March. And they talked about some potential senior trips. And I guess they're looking at either a train ride or a shopping trip to a town like Belfast, maybe. And it sounds like she's looking to start up a monthly social time for seniors to gather and just play games and hang out, or it's gonna be monthly to start. I think she'd like to do it more often.
It's a great idea.
It is.
She just wants to have some time where you just come, you know, structure, just come hang out, so. And that's it.
Good. And the Resilience Committee.
The Resilience Committee met on October seventeenth. Uh, this was the joint meeting between South Thomaston and St. George. Um, there was a discussion of the two community engagement meetings, October first in South Thomaston, October second. And here, there was good turnout for both. But um it was recognized that there were some groups of people missing. The meetings start, started early in both places. So there was very few families. Um there was only one or two people from the fishing community at at each meeting. So they're gonna try, next, next time they have a community engagement meeting, they're gonna try to focus on those two groups. Um, and the next meeting um is November fourteenth in South Thomaston. That's the joint, again, the joint meeting for the grant on the Climate Action Plan. And that's it.
All right. So, follow-up items. What we need to follow up on other than posting on the website that we um will be having an ad hoc open space committee and inviting volunteers? I can't think of any other follow-up items we need to do. So um I will make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss um possible litigation and options regarding the status of English Town Road.
West.
West. Is there a second for that? A second. All in favor? That's five. So we will excuse people on Zoom and anybody who's not Brandon or on the select board. Uh. And we will see you in two weeks if you want to come.